It's on the clock for a meeting order. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our foundation under God, individual and liberty.
The motion to accept the minutes of January 4th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion to accept the financial report and payment of the bills.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Budget amendment?
Budget amendment number 2012-008. Just divided $4,622 received from the county for the Senate Bill 508 mandate will be forwarded to the senior fire company.
Motion to accept budget amendment 2012-008.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. American Red Cross? Aye.
We're both catching up.
Oh, that's true.
Works both ways.
Okay. That's one way you don't forget each other's name, right?
That's right. We're requisite for working for the Red Cross. Good evening, mayor, commissioners, and thank you all so much for inviting us back again. My name is Pat Delaney and with me is Pat Smythe, colleague of mine from the Red Cross, and just want to be here to, one, say thank you. Thank you for the town's continued support of the work of the Red Cross and allowing us to rent the facility on blue ball. As you may know, the Red Cross has been around for 131 years. Our job is to prepare for and then respond to emergencies, both from natural disaster, man-made disaster, terrorist attack. We're very fortunate in the relationship we've had for over a decade with the town of Elton to have a training and logistics center right here in Elton for, I guess about 12 years now, allowing us to conduct classes and trainings for volunteers, for community members at large, as well as serve as our backup operations center in the event of a large-scale emergency here on the peninsula. We're here tonight to ask for consideration to renew our lease, which is up again every three years, and we're very appreciative of the past support and very hopeful that you'll continue to allow us to occupy that facility to continue to do the good work that we do, not only here in Elton and Cecil County, but as a station center for the entire peninsula. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have about the work of the Red Cross or how we're using your facility here in town.
So, is it working out for you then? Is it down there?
Works wonderfully.
And you guys, the guy's been offering some training as well, or the town?
Yes, sir, yes.
All right, very good. Anybody else have any question?
Nine classes extension.
So, can I get a motion to extend their lease?
Motion to extend their lease.
Second. Second. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lewis? The only thing I had no business was, Steve, I asked about the recycling, how we were doing. Let's see what we got.
Yeah. We did. We received seven months of the recycling program, mandatory recycling program, and the same seven-month period last year compared to the seven-month period this year, we have recycled 247 tons compared to only 76 tons last year. That's an increase of about 200,000 tons of recycling, of single-stemmed recycling material, which comes to savings of about $14,400 for that seven months.
So, it's working and we're making more money. Okay, we're saving more on this, but saving more money, yeah. So, that's great. As more and more people get on board, I guess we'll be even better. So, I enjoy any old business?
The only thing I had for old business that I meant to ask today when I stopped was any news on the time center, what's happening that wasn't fixed or?
We'll talk about the scrap time center. You go to Inview. It's a Ceridian program. Laura and Kathy have a webinar with them tomorrow at 2:00.
And what was the name of that?
I think it's called Inview or, I think that's what it's called. It's a Ceridian product.
And will Laura update us on that?
She has a webinar on it.
Thank you.
So, is that a program change, Louis?
Yes.
It's a crossover. As you answer a question, you're going to something else, so evidently there's a crossover. And so, what did you say about it again?
The Ceridian, originally was Ceridian for the payroll and Time Center for time management, separate companies with partnership. Had a lot of problems with Time Center, so we asked, Laura got ahold of Ceridian, Raff, to find out if we could go with different products, and they came up with a Ceridian product in-house, and it may be more suitable for the town because we're a relatively small company compared to what they deal with. And they're having a webinar on it tomorrow, and she'll be able to update the board.
I have a concern that came to me as far as looking for other water sources in the town of Elton. There was a question came to me of what's going on with that. At this time, I don't think we've been updated from Ken whether he has found any other water sources, but I do know that he was still looking for it, and I suggest that if we follow through with this, we have another work session and discussion to find out where we're at with it and if there's possibility of doing this. I know the last time it was brought up about doing studies, and we've already done studies in the past, and should be able to compile that information that has already been done to be able to seek some other water sources, and I do want to make sure that we're following up on that and maybe with another work session to talk about it.
Any old business?
Yes.
Louis, what is the status of the rec center that we have given discussion to? Any?
Yes, she comes to the, she's coming to the...
Do you speak up, please?
Yeah, Mary's coming to the board. She comes to the board with the recommendations. I didn't know if it was the first meeting in February or the second. I'll find out. She's going to present a recommendation.
Okay, thanks.
Chuck, any?
Yes. Louis, at 279, outside of the elementary schools and at the crossing area, did we get any feedback from State Highways as far as the miles per hour? If we could get that?
No, we never did.
Okay. Follow-up and check, see what they, follow-up with and see what they?
We probably went to the Office of Traffic Safety. I'll have to contact the specific engineer and find out what happened to that. Follow-up.
That's it, man. Thank you. All right. I think it was last week, yeah, the 10th, had a meeting with the State Highway Department, met with Louis and a lot of the gentlemen from the State Highway, and it looks promising.
Is this new business?
Yeah, it's new business. That we may be able to get a sidewalk finally across Delaware Avenue's bridge. We looked at their proposal and looks good, having a sidewalk come down from Howard Street, all the way down in front of the park and up and across the bridge into our little crosswalk there, going into the park. So, that's what they're proposing and looks good. I believe they just need to go back to their planning people and look at it and hopefully we can, maybe probably about next year possibly, because usually State Highway takes such a long time of their planning stages, it takes a while, but it looks like we make it our bridge finally with a sidewalk across it because they will not replace the bridge. Bridge is structurally sound, and it's in the budget for the next 10 years. So, it's better at least we get the sidewalk across the bridge, a pedestrian walkway, better than trying to fight for the bridge, as I've done that numerous times, but it looks like they're going to put a sidewalk in there for us or a crossover instead. So, I think that's some good news.
What did you say the direction of the sidewalks going to be?
Coming down from Howard Street all the way down to the bridge and across, outside...
Coming down Howard and then coming down Delaware Avenue?
Right. And then down to the, once it crosses over one side, the other side to the park, and it goes to our little crosswalk, but we have a little bridge there, and it goes right into that so they can walk right into the bridge or right into the park. Yeah.
So, the sidewalk is going to be on the external side of the bridge?
Right. Be right from the skate park. Yeah, I'll show you by the picture, or you can look at it there.
I got you.
Yeah. I think that's going to be a very big improvement. Look at that. So, we've probably accomplished, hopefully accomplished something there, at least for now. Okay, Mayor Jerry?
I was asked by the Director of Public Works to read this notice at the town, at our meeting tonight regarding snow removal. The town of Elton's Department of Public Works reminds citizens of the following with respect to snow removal. When snow is in the forecast, residents should park their cars in garages, driveways, or other off-street parking when available. This is especially true in cul-de-sacs. If a truck cannot safely plow around cars parked in a cul-de-sac, the truck must leave the street and return the next day after the cars have been removed. During plowing operations, it is inevitable that the snow will be moved into driveways and onto sidewalks. When possible, residents are asked to wait to clear driveways and sidewalks until after plowing operations have taken place. We do not have the resources to dig out driveways after the roads have been plowed. Please avoid throwing snow into cleared and plowed streets. Consider clearing snow from nearby fire hydrants or storm drains. Remember, the faster we get in, the quicker you can get out. This is on the town website and has also been placed in local newspapers as well. And I have to say, we were able to take the training with Public Works for the snowplows, and it really is important because when, it's a tough job they have to do, so if everyone would please try to do what they ask us, it will go quicker and smoother. The other thing I have is I would like to commend Commissioner Gibbons. Again, this year, he chaired the Martin Luther King Day celebration at his church, and it was fantastic. The speaker, always wonderful, a great program. Thank you for doing that for the community.
I second that.
That's all I have.
Don't have any new business, but just for the records on that snow plowing, we've got to be mindful for the people that are putting their cars in their driveways because I know myself, I've been in the driveway, and now I've got three times as much snow to shovel out. So, if we can do anything to alleviate pollen up in front of our driveways, I would appreciate that also because we, as taxpayers, still have to be able to shovel through, whip the hand instead of the power equipment.
Last week, we had a little bit of a discussion on the methadone clinic coming out, and we talked about the image that it presents to the town. My wife was talking with her, I'm on the phone the other night, it's bomb evidently on the news or whether some media, it was stated that you can go to any street in Elton and walk down the street and get dressed, and I simply told my wife, well, you know, that's not true. I guess the bottom line, I guess somebody still, or people are still trying to tarnish a bad image here, I guess, in reference to all that's going on with the methadone clinic and what have you, but certainly we know we have a very nice community to live in, and hopefully we can maintain that regardless of external resources that intend to come this way. That's it.
Okay. Chuck? Okay. Becky?
My name is Rebecca McKinney. I'm from Cecil County all my life. Number one, I will agree with this attorney 100 percent. When there's no clouds or clowns, they shouldn't block driveways, period. If the house catches on fire, how's the fire truck going to get up in there? Or the ambulance to rescue somebody and save their lives if you got to block with a bunch of snow? You don't look that big. It's a shoe fits word because it's the truth. Okay, that's number one. Number two is, we have to keep the sidewalks at 150 East Main Street clean. You cannot let the snowplows plow the sidewalks at 150. And from where I live, for all the rest of widows and seniors, we cannot have, and I will not shovel this year like I did last year to save somebody's life because it's not my place. You all are the heads of this board. You Joe are especially the heads of this board. You're most. It's up to you and Louis to see that the widows and seniors do not have to get out there and shovel snow with cancer and heart problems, and I'm one. It's been a while since I've been at town meetings. There's a reason why. Most of yous know why I haven't been here. There's one on the board that's upset me very bad. That's why I haven't been here. I'm here tonight, and that's nicely. I don't get no, nothing soda thing or shirt thing. That's my nicely answer. That's why I haven't been here, and I will not stay away from meetings, please, none of yous. I'm from this town. I've been in this town longer than you know. My family built this town. Now, she was always built by the Hools, not none of you. The Hools, Joneses, Russells, Andersons, McKinneys, we all built this town. I understand the bagel shop, which I'm glad of, is closing. I'm very, very happy and very glad. It's one less bar. It's one less place the teenagers can hang in. And yes, I'm right there where I can watch it, and I do. I walk up and down the street, y'all might not have seen me. I was down the street last night at 12:00. There was a lot going on on Main Street last night. And if we'd had a couple of the decent officers, one of them is here tonight, out there, it wouldn't have happened. I can assure you, if Officer Roland had been out there last night, what happened in front of the bagel shop, 150, and in front of the courthouse would not have happened. It would not have happened. It's going to continue to happen unless I have the help from him. I'm sorry. The rest of them does do a good job, but Officer Roland is not scared. Don't walk in front of him and do something because he won't, he won't take it. He's a very good officer, and I wish all the rest of them were like that. If I'm an officer, and you walk in front of me with something you shouldn't have, you ain't going to walk away because you're going to be laying there for the structure to come in. I'm not going to shoot you or kill you, but you want to make sure you want to go to the hospital and you want to go to jail. And I'm not going to stay three days. And another thing is...
You've got 30 seconds, Martin.
No, we do.
Becky, 40 seconds. Come on, 40 seconds, five minutes.
I'm talking, thank you. Don't point your finger at me again.
Becky, you've got five minutes.
Anyway, another thing is, show you why I've been here.
Becky, five minutes. Time's up.
Another thing is...
Becky.
We don't need another methadone clinic in this town. We have enough of drugs on Main Street and High Street. We don't need no more, whether you like it or not.
Okay.
You're looking forward.
Thank you. King Michael?
Mayor and commissioners, my name's King Michael. I live at 706 Delaware Avenue here in Elton. I sent a letter a few weeks ago out of my concern for the effects of businesses with potential negative impacts on the surrounding property values and the safety of the people that live close to these negative type of businesses. I wanted to make sure we look at our zoning and building ordinances to see if they have the adequate buffers, setbacks, and parking that protect all property owners, not just the new investors that want to come into our community. I'd like to see us also to include ordinary citizens as we revise our ordinances or look at them for feedback and input to see what they think about the changes in the ordinances because what the town might see as a good ordinance might not be the same for a person whose property backs up to some of the businesses that are considering coming into our county. It might not be enough if their backyard where their children are playing back up to substance abuse centers and things like that, so we want to make sure that we do have adequate buffers and setbacks. It might not be, again, I asked the town to consider reviewing our zoning and building ordinances. I don't, I hope that we don't let our zeal for bringing in new businesses into our community affect the roots of our community, which is the individual property owners in the town. Thank you.
Dave?
Dave Fordice, 11508 Street, right behind American Home and Hardware. I came and talked to you guys about two weeks ago about the methadone clinic situation. I'm continuing to monitor it. I went and I talked to the county commissioners last evening, and I also received some information on what Baltimore County has done in terms of what they are doing to restrict it. I'm in the process of educating myself on the issue. John had come lately to it, but I would like to offer my services as a citizen. If you need help with reviewing any ordinances, I can give my perspective as a homeowner that's right in the heart of Elton to do that. So, here I am.
My name is Larry Crawford, and I live at 132 Patton Way here in Elton, and I'd like to have an update on this methadone clinic. Where do we stand with it? Well, we're just looking on, looking at it. I want to know where it stands from the standpoint of my own personal protection. Do we need to triple the police department, the sheriff's department for all the people that's going to be coming in for this, or what's the plan?
Are you referring to the one?
Yeah. I'm referring to all three of them if they're pushed through.
All three? I know that the one on 40, there's an ordinance been passed. I know that the town is reviewing the zoning ordinance right now for updating it to deal with any future clinics or what have you that may or may not try to come into the town or want to locate into the town. The one, particular one, that, basics, I read in the paper itself today, I'm sure you did too, is coming up for, in front of the Board of Appeals for variances, and that's next month's meeting. Other than that, that's where we are.
Okay. Thank you.
There's one other down at the end of High Street, but that's been here for a while.
I understand it, I understand it, but we're adding to it. Just one appears.
Yeah, we are.
I might add that 100 Route 40 is in the county and not in town.
Bob?
Listen, bird, 1051, Wayne, Elton. Couple of my questions were answered. Earl answered one about searching for water with 7 Trent, and Mr. Mary, you answered the other one about the sidewalk, because we were talking one time about having a hanging bridge, well, sidewalk eliminate that. Under old business, which was brought up a month or so ago about the house on High Street, where does that stand now? A house down on West High Street that has broken windows out, said you sent two letters to them. I don't think any of you would have lived in that house or have that house living next or being next door to you to live next door to it. So, when are you going to do something about it? When's it going to be done?
John checked into that?
Yes, I'm not familiar with what he's done.
Over a month ago, you said he had sent two letters. That's been over a month ago. Just checking to see what the status on that is.
Was the house 240, what number was that?
I don't know the number. It's down next to the blue house on the left. I mean, I think we all know who owns the property.
Yeah, definitely.
This homeless issue. The first paragraph in the paper, it said, "The action was postponed until the property issues can be sorted out." Whose property issues? Are you talking about who owns the property or the property of the homeless?
The property is personal property, not real property, and the issue is the Department of Public Works was sent down there to deal with abandoned property, not to take property away from people in possession of it. So, we had to cancel the action for Friday, and we'll have to regroup on that and how we're going to handle it. That's all.
Well, why don't you call the State Highway Department and find out how they handled the bridge?
We already called them.
They told you what to do because they did it, had no problems with it when they removed the people from under the bridge.
Well, they do have a problem with it because the other, they already called them about the twin bridges, not the...
I'm not talking about the twin bridges. I'm talking about the Walter Baker Bridge when they removed them there two years ago.
Well, they did the same thing we did. They give notice, and then they win.
That's right. So, why can't you do the same thing?
Well, we are going to. We just did it with Friday.
I know, being a taxpayer, I'm not allowed in that park or any of these parks that the town owns after sunset until daylight. I don't think I can burn a fire. I can't burn a fire in my backyard. Is there an ordinance about open fires in the town of Elton? There is, isn't there? Well, there's fires all down Route 40. You see it when you go by there. I don't know what the answer is, but it seems like Elton's become a dumping pot for this whole damn county, excuse me, the whole county. It's become a dumping pot. We have all the social programs that they have, all the handouts, and they just, they dwell on that here. If it's important, Earl, there was an issue a while back about dogs, what they do in the town parks. So, you put bags up for them. Where do these people go? In the town park. We were in the Army. We use slip trenches. I don't think they're putting any slip trenches. It is, it's against the health codes. Soon as you get rid of some of this stuff, I think the better off the town will be. The whole town will be much better off without that. All right, that was the two things. Well, in the paper the other day, there was an article in there about a road that had been flooded because of a bridge, because of a stream or a creek that had trees that were dropped because of the storm, where the state went in, cleared those trees out. If the state can do that on a stream, why can't the town get with the state, clean out that sandbar dam that's down on Delaware Avenue? When you look at that, you can see it's wide on this side. The other side is over here like this. It's a created, a natural dam is what it is.
Well, they won't clean it out again. They've cleaned it out a couple of times.
Well, it hasn't been cleaned out for years.
They just won't do it.
Well, can the town do it?
No.
No, it can't.
Why?
It costs over $100,000 to do it.
We just import thousands of sand and they bark on it.
All right. Let's see, that's pretty much what it was. But I would think, certainly think it's something could be done because raising the, as you found out, raising that road out there by...